Okay, I'm gonna call the April 5th, 2023 Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting to order. It is 5:00 and the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I also want to add that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoan people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. Our sincere condolences go out to the tribal community today after learning about the death of their chief Vernon Lopez, which will be, I think, acknowledged later this week. So if we could just have a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Next, we'd like to, we have to ratify the agenda for tonight. We are trying to finish before sundown to acknowledge the celebration of Passover. So we're gonna try to move through this swiftly, but I'm not aware of any changes to what we have on here.
The only thing which we can do at the May 3rd meeting was I neglected to indicate that the naming of the Michael J. Ford flag does not have an asteron. So we can just talk about it and you can vote on it at the next meeting if you want.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Do we want to remove that or just leave it?
Well, I can talk about it tonight and then you can vote on it next time.
All right. Any other changes or things? It doesn't look like Delia is here.
She is.
Oh, she is. Oh.
Double hat tonight. Two hats.
Thank you. And what about the tribal education department? Are we expecting anyone? Oh, is that you back there telling? Sorry. I'll put my glasses on. Okay, just making sure we don't have to change anything. Okay, so I'll take a motion to ratify.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to ratify the agenda, aside from like voting on Flag Day.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Matt, second by Dawn. Any discussion? Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Vote yes as well. I don't think we have any public comment. Is that right, Sherri? Okay. And first up, we have the Mashpee Middle High School Red Cross Club.
I love that you're all very much respected. So this group is a new group in the whole world of the state of Massachusetts for the American Red Cross Youth Club. They have been, they have been very active that year at the high school and have done some amazing, amazing activities, which they're going to share. I won't go too much into it, but I just want to personally thank all of you because you've brought this bright light and I know you've done a lot of work at the younger schools as well. I'm just hoping that this continues and you just keep recruiting young kids to this. So we're very grateful that they're here and thank you. I know Hannah and I met this afternoon and you're in for a treat with this presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us. Like Dr. Monette said, we are the American Red Cross Youth Club at Mashpee Middle High School. My name is Hannah Rogers and I'm one of the presidents. Unfortunately, my co-president Caroline Cotton couldn't be here tonight, but I'm joined by Delia, Alina, Grace, and Georgia. And today we're just gonna talk about our achievements as we're coming up on our one-year anniversary of starting the club. We started last spring at the beginning is when we first kind of had the idea and we were supported by Mrs. DeBoer and she encouraged us to really get started. So we wanted to say thank you to all of you and to Dr. Monette and Mrs. O'Brien over there somewhere for encouraging us this year and Ms. Purdy for being our advisor. We've been able to do a lot of things because of the support of the administration and our teachers and our peers around us. So we just wanted to say thank you. And we have little thank you cards for everyone because we wouldn't be able to do it without you. We know we've missed some school and to go do presentations, but we think it's worth it because we've made up our work and we got to educate the younger students and hopefully you guys think it was worth it too. I know the missing school part is a little bit, but it's okay.
So what is the American Red Cross? So the American Red Cross is a nonprofit organization dedicating to serving the people and the people in need. So some of the things that the American Red Cross covers is emergency assistance, disaster relief, and preparedness education. And the preparedness education goes over disaster and emergency.
So the club as a whole has to have a mission statement. So the mission statement for the American Red Cross is the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And our school, for our club, we needed to make our own mission statement, which is the MMHS American Red Cross Youth Club strives to provide accurate and life-saving information and trainings to members of our school and community as well as to serve those in need around us.
So as of right now, we have about like 15 members and that's just through nine through 11, but next year we're really hoping that we can include some middle schoolers. And we've heard that they've also had interest and some, even some sixth graders have had interest in it. And we meet roughly once a month because we're all so busy, but we, whenever like we have a project or something, we meet more frequently.
So as Hannah said, we started this club like the beginning of spring 2022. And here are some of the activities that we have done throughout the school year. So throughout the community and our school, we had information booths in like the different events, talking about our club, what we do, helping like provide some more information for people. We had some CPR demonstrations, which some of the kids really enjoyed doing, and we just answered any questions that anyone had.
So one of our community service projects were cocoa and cookies. And we made little boxes of cookies and put cocoa in them and gave them out to the community. If you see right there, that's my dad, actually. He works at Katuat Fire Department and that's where somebody gave them some cocoa and cookies.
So one of our biggest projects from this year was the Blood Drive, which was in collaboration with HOSA and it was actually a senior project. But this was great because we got to work really directly with the American Red Cross and the nurses and the administration there to plan this. And we registered everyone in the system, so we learned how to do that. And it was really good because we set a record for our school. We collected 37 pints of blood, which saves three lives per pint. So that was really cool that we got to be a part of that. And it was really successful. So we're very proud of that.
Another project that the Red Cross, that the American Red Cross, you, sorry, that the American Red Youth, sorry, but another project that we participated in this year was the Sixth Annual Backpack Drive. And we collaborated with HOSA, Key Club, and Human Rights Club for this project, where we collected a bunch of brand-new backpacks filled with hygiene products and other things. And we donated them to all, to all homeless, sorry, homeless shelters around Cape Cod, which was such an amazing thing. We, we filled up the backpacks and we donated them. We even volunteered to help load them in the cars to go out. It was a great experience and I think that it was really good for the Red Cross to be a part of.
So the Pillowcase Project was a part, is a part of the Red Cross Preparedness Program and it teaches K through six, like what to do in the case of home emergencies and stuff like that. So we specifically taught all of grade six what to do in the case of a home fire.
The kids love this. They always like getting to do pillowcases and we play like a kaboom. They like to remember the information. And I think it was pretty well overseen when we did it. And we could have done it without Ms. O'Brien. She was very supportive. And we went to all the health classes and the commensals. I know she's not here, but thanks to them.
I'm sorry, what to do in case of a what?
Like home emergencies and a home fire.
I just didn't catch that.
We focused on home fire and fire prevention this year, but it can be any sort of emergency or disaster that can happen. So specific to your area. So we knew what could happen.
I'm sorry. What's the significance of the pillowcase?
So the pillowcase, they fill with items that can help them in an emergency. So like a flashlight, a first aid kit, tinfoil and paper, anything like that that can help them if they have to evacuate their home or if the power goes out, so anything like that.
So our club also had a presentation at the HOSA conference this year. And we talked about how we started the club and all the different projects that we did. And we helped provide information to other schools that were there who were interested in starting their own club, which was really good to be a part of. And I know that we all really enjoyed doing that.
So we know the school year is already coming to an end and it's coming quickly, but we still have some things planned for this year. So next up, we have trainings that we're starting. We have people being trained in the Pillowcase Project, Hands Only CPR, and Be Red Cross Ready, which is very similar to Pillowcase, but without the pillowcases. And then also, we're working with Mrs. O'Brien and the fifth grade classes and the fifth grade students to do a fire safety and home fire prevention lesson and for the whole fifth grade. So kind of what we did for sixth grade, we just want everyone to get the information because we think it's really important. So we're just working to teach as many people as we can. Does anybody have any questions?
What grade are you guys all in? I know what grade Hannah's in.
Ninth, tenth, eleventh, tenth, ninth.
Okay, so no seniors?
No.
This is great. So you'll be able to build off all this for next year. So two things that I'm aware of that you might be interested in, well, I guess there's three things. One is I could connect you with the folks in the National Weather Service in Norton, Mass, who forecast the weather for Cape Cod and might give you some ideas for some emergency preparedness activities around, you know, other than fire, flooding, hurricanes, those types of things. Also, I'm curious if you've connected with the Emergency Management Department at the Mashpee Wampanoan Tribe?
We have not, no.
That might be an interesting learning opportunity to learn about how they, they work with tribal members in the event of an emergency and what sort of practical preparedness they engage in. And then the last thing is, I'm aware of a investigator at UMass Boston who actually is interviewing homeless populations on Cape Cod and transient populations to talk about changes related to climate change. That are, that's like a longer timescale than a rapid emergency, but I'm curious if the Red Cross might be interested in that project and sort of what comes out of that. It's a PhD project for a student. But so I could connect you with her as well.
Yeah, that would be awesome. That sounds like a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt?
So I like, I do have a question, but like first off, I want to say thank you because I mean, it seems like you guys have really accomplished a lot throughout this year. And like, you know, again, it is great that like, you know, not that like, hey, there's no seniors, but like the fact that this will carry on. You're also passionate about doing, you know, this type of service. It is definitely a great community service, what you're doing. So I guess what I'm asking is, so how did your peers kind of receive it? Because you did some of the CPR events and all that. Do you feel like you're finding your peers being like, wow, I learned something today or, you know, how they're receiving it?
Yeah, so I think most of our classmates are trained in CPR and basic first aid because they do it in the freshman health class. So most of them know that, but they like doing the Heimlich because we have with like training device that you get to pretend to give someone the Heimlich. So people like that. And I think it helps to put you kind of in a real-life scenario because it's basically just like doing the Heimlich. So I think they definitely learn from that.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think, I think you guys accomplished a lot, definitely, in your first year. One question, do you do anything in regard to water safety?
I think Ms. Purdy can help me on this. We have, we have a senior that's doing a senior project for water safety, right?
Right. And that would, that would be something we could entertain. A lot of this requires training.
A lot, a lot of training. We have to do, for most of our trainings, it's 30 hours of like online computer training and then six hours of in-person or Zoom training of the actual teaching part. So we learn how to first do it ourselves and then we have to be trained additionally to teach it to other people.
But a very important topic though to consider, given that we live in this beautiful peninsula that has high-risk activities, fun activities that come with it. So that is something that we could entertain. I know that this year, we're looking to do, have the club members get fully trained as instructors in the certifying process of hands-only CPR. But water, we did have a senior that taught water safety classes, but for continuity purposes, I think that's something that we could entertain now.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think it would be worthwhile exploring.
Especially since we're on Cape Cod. We're the only ones on Cape Cod, so who else is gonna do it?
I mean, I think somebody is doing it, you know, particularly for lifeguard certifications. If I remember in another life, having gone through that program. So I just think that, to your point, we're surrounded by water. Every one of you, I believe, is in the water. All our kids are in the water. And so water safety, I think, would be a paramount thing to be promoting. So something to consider. Thank you.
I think it's great what you guys are doing. Congratulations on your first year. I kind of just echo what they're saying. You know, it's great to see a new club get started and get so much done and share this information. That's really important because you never know who's gonna need it someday. So thanks for taking the initiative to start this and good luck in future years. Can't wait to see what else you do.
That's something that we say a lot when we're, when we're teaching younger kids. Like we of course never want any of these emergencies or anything to happen, but it doesn't hurt to be prepared. And we hope that if it does happen, you can use this knowledge to save a life or get out of a home fire or whatever it may be. So.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you guys.
We're gonna get a picture of that committee with you, so if you want us to stay there.
Ms. Purdy?
Maybe put like one of the nice.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Hannah, can you put the first slide up?
Gorgeous.
President's party. Are we all, just them or all of us? Yeah, maybe somebody go in the back with Nicole. Uncool, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Did everyone, did everyone?
She's doing the burst, huh?
The burst.
The burst. Yes, yes. But each of us in like different person each time.
All right, are we ready to put your other hat on?
How is this possible?
It's our student rep. We're so glad you could come to this. Yep, it's, we're on your item, so go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone. I hope all is well for you all. This past, past month has been quite productive. If you didn't hear, a lot's been going on. So much has taken place. For starters, it's finally spring. I can't tell you how long I've been looking forward to this, which means that spring sports have officially started. I know that softball and lacrosse have already had their first games and varsity tennis, girls varsity tennis, has their first game tomorrow. So it's really like getting right into it. HOSA members attended their, the HOSA conference a few weeks ago in Worcester State University. And it was such an amazing experience. Like they had different presentations every 40, 45 minutes. And there would be one about like how to, how life was like as a cardiothoracic surgeon or what life would be like if you were a pediatric surgeon. And it like was a really big career window. And they were like giving us papers of, to like reach out to them when we were at the age of looking for colleges and stuff. And we got taken into this room where there were like real-life baby simulators. And the baby transitioned into a toddler and then into a child. And then they also had a simulator of an actual like pregnant woman too. It was, it was incredible. That's all I have to say. But Olivia Martin and Leah, both freshmen, they actually got first place in their career display presentation. And I just wanted to say congratulations to them because this is their first year in the club. They'd never done a presentation before. They went in there with super, they're sorry, they went in there with a lot of courage and they took first place. So I just want to say congratulations to them. Caroline Cotton and Hannah Rogers, they also presented the American Red Cross Youth Club presentation about like their journey and they did a great job too. Environmental Club has started a tree replenish project and it ends tomorrow. Members of the club needed to get at least a sponsorship, a sponsorship or sell at least one tree to go towards our goal of selling as many trees as we could. There are white oaks, American hornbeam, and red maple saplings. And for every, every $5 purchase or donation, the club will be able to plant one more sapling in the community. And I think that that's a really good way to contribute back to Cape Cod, especially because there's a lot of houses being built. And I think it'd be really nice to plant those on Cape. Another, another club, Active Minds, will also be participating in a conference almost similar to the HOSA conference, a little bit different. It also provides a great learning experience, but instead of like adult presentations, they're mainly just a little bit for more of the high school. And they'll, they'll be focusing on the topic mental health. And this will help everyone, a part of the Active Minds Club, be aware of how to better expand the awareness on mental health. The club will also be planning on wearing bandanas on their backpacks to let others know, other members of the school know that if they need to get something off their chest or they don't have a trusted adult and they need to talk to someone, that they're able to talk to the people with the bandanas. So the bandanas will kind of be like a silent symbol of you can talk to me. So that's something we will be planning on doing very soon. Senior Exhibition Night was Monday afternoon and all the seniors did an amazing job representing Mashpee. Coming soon on April 22nd, NJHS will be holding a canal cleanup, which is kind of like a beach cleanup just at the canal. But it's another great way to contribute back to the Cape Cod community. There was recently a presentation on human trafficking for all the grades at the high school. And it was very informative and important. And I'm glad that the high school students were able to be informed on such an important matter because it, it's really something that's present that a lot of people are sometimes ignorant to on Cape because they're like, oh, well, it's Cape Cod. Like they assume that certain things don't happen on Cape because it's like a small little, a small little island. But it does. And I feel like that meeting helped a lot of students become aware of really what's going around, on around us. Although there was supposed to be a high school talent show tomorrow, unfortunately, it had to get rescheduled to a new undetermined date. However, this gives an opportunity for others who weren't able to do it to sign up or to practice for the talent show. And I'm so excited to see it. I've been looking forward to the talent show for a few months now. Quarter three of four quarters is almost over, which means that we're almost three-fourths done through the school and through the school year. And it just like blows my mind. Like if you think about it, we're already done halfway through and we're almost three-fourths done, which means we only have like a quarter and like a few days left of school, which is crazy. This year went by so fast, but that just means that I've been enjoying it and I'm sure most of the students of MMHS have been too. That's all I have for this evening, but thank you all so much for your time and I hope you have a lovely rest of your week.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Delia? You know, the parents get really scared when you talk about the end of school. So I'm fine for it to go slowly. We don't need to rush the last day of school.
Yeah, for sure. There's so much to enjoy for the last few months though, too. So.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you so much. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Yeah.
So next we have Talia back there, I think. Are we using the screen anymore tonight? Yeah. Okay. We probably just.
Hey, guys.
Thanks, Sherri. That way it's just not behind Talia.
So hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm barely here, so I'm sorry.
I think we're all there.
We just got back from Alaska on Sunday at 12:00 AM. So I feel like I'm in a weird universe right now. So bear with me. But it was amazing. So we got, a big component of it was the cultural exchange. So there was a group from Hawaii, a group from Homa, Louisiana, Yukon, which is Canada. They're the Interior Clincket. So, and then we obviously met the Sikka and some of the clans from the Clincket tribe as well. So it was, it was cool seeing that interaction. Because if you don't know, like the Interior Clinkets are, they're Clincket, but they just moved basically over the hill when they were forced off when the Russians came in and stuff like that. So it was interesting to hear about that history because being so far away, we don't really know and how they similar and they're different. And it was interesting because Mashpee was the only federally recognized tribe there. So we were working on this passage of rights of nature. So basically having all of those minds with the, with the same challenges, being able to kind of wrap their head around what's going on and have Mashpee be the forefront for what they can accomplish. Because obviously, well, Alaska natives have their own rights and we're kind of trying to base our premise off of what they already have established as well. So learning from them and what they have and their, their sovereignty. And it's very similar, like especially because they honor their herring and they have the same resources and stuff like that. So having the kids make the connection, being so far away, and how we both honor them in, in our own ways and then how we both harvest them as well. We, we learned a new way to harvest herring eggs, which is, which is amazing and new. It's interesting to, you know, see how they do it. Because we, with our herring row, we do it from the body. They do it after. And their whole concept in the fishing traps, we were able to lay some fishing traps and like bring all that about. We were, because we had a culture keeper there that's a fisherman, we, he was able to answer a lot of vital questions, like did we do this? Why, the differences as well as far as like where they spawn, salt water, freshwater, here, there. So it was very, it was a very inclusive trip with the cultural components as well as the, the legal component and the kind of natural resource component of actually fishing and getting out there and doing stuff like that. But yes, like I said, as the federally recognized tribe, we were kind of the forefront. Homa is a state-recognized tribe. And they're actually facing challenges with losing land from the coastal erosion and stuff like that. So their difficulties and being able to kind of support them and see how we impose our laws and stuff like that. And then Hawaii obviously has no laws or anything that are, anything to help them at all. So where they can begin this sort of attack was interesting. And then Yukon as well, because they're Canadian and they're kind of facing the, their military and their government officials like dumping things on their land and their lack of resources and stuff. And them being able to go out there, because obviously they're not on the coast anymore, they have to make that trip annually to get a part of their tradition, which is the herring eggs. So they're not, because they were forced off of their land, they lost a part of their culture that now they have to make, you know, a special, like they, their whole council has to invest in youth to sponsor them to go out to be, to keep this part of their culture. So it's interesting. And it was really good for the kids to realize. And also put it in their face too, as far as Alaska, seeing how like similar, I guess, within our, like I And also put it in their face too, as far as Alaska, seeing how like similar, I guess, within our, like I said, resources and kind of the capacity of it all. Where we kind of discussed how we're a little like a hundred years or even fifty years ahead of them as far as their depletion of resources because the overabundance of non-natives coming into town just for the commercial fishing aspect. Like if they're taking over, they're not at the point that we are, but if they keep on moving the way that they move and not justify, just, or imposing these certain laws and putting more extensive laws on their fishing and on their indigenous and Aboriginal rights, then they could face the same threat that we are facing right now with the herring. So it really came full circle as far as learning from each other and the kids being able to connect and being able to get that network of support across all Turtle Island, because we were Hawaii, Alaska, Louisiana, Little California, Mashpee. Like it was crazy just to get everybody there. And we were there for a long time. We ate a lot of different foods. So it was great. Any questions?
I'm so jealous.
So I mean, we, I kind of gave the kids a bit of a break because we did meet just before this as well to do our next action steps. Because the trip was kind of like our motivation and our momentum. So now it's really where it gets into work, where, where we drafted, we drafted our law. So we kind of have to incorporate it and make it more concrete. And then we're gonna follow suit on our, basically our tribal initiatives that we have, like our checks that we have to do in order to pass this tribal code that will incorporate the rights of nature. And then, you know, kind of get all the word out there to the public, work with the town, the state, co-management sort of styles and stuff like that until we get to the point of being able to have that capacity of the complete authority. So the kids are really excited and they're a little like hazy like I am right now, but we're hoping that Alaska will just keep them motivated because they definitely want to get to Hawaii and they want to get to, you know, everywhere to be able to fish with them and, you know, do all the stuff that they were talking about. So it was definitely a great experience that we should be investing more into, I think.
So are, how are the kids who did get to go gonna share all that with, you know, some native students that weren't, that didn't attend, for example? Like is that, is there a way to share? Are you guys pulling together pictures or?
Well, so the biggest, the big part of their initiative is social media campaign. So they have, I'm pretty sure I announced it, maybe I didn't. Everything's becoming a blur because I've been meeting with so many people about this initiative. But they constructed the Mashpee Native Environmental Ambassadors. So they basically have the core group of the native students that are working on it. So it's more than people that went to, the students that went to Alaska. But, so their whole initiative is the rights of herring and their, to establish rights of herring ordinances and laws. And then their first campaign is save our herring. So our fir-, our first ordinance will go into protecting the herring and trying to get authority of those sort of natural resources to protect them in any sort of way. So that is, and that's a community effort. So we're basically just planning the steps in order to get that passed right now. So first it starts with obviously constructing the group, which the group is already constructed, but I'm kind of trying to get the word out there to add as many kids as possible. Then second would be like the tribal buy-in. So they'll be meeting with the, they've been meeting consistently with our clan mothers and the elders, so, and the general membership. So we're working within that as far as the, the tribal aspects. But in order to keep other students involved, it really will depend on if they're interested or not. So we can definitely plan, especially if the school's having any events, even at Earth Day events. I'm not sure if you guys are doing that, but we definitely want to be a part of anything that is, as I said, it's the Mashpee Native Environmental Ambassadors. So anything that's environmental that any of the clubs are doing, all grades, you know, this is, they, any platform that they can get to share their initiative. Because it's a big one in order to get this sort of authority over the herring. It's gonna, it's one of few that have been established in America right now. So it's kind of like the forefront of what we're doing. So any sort of group or anything like that, I think that'd be the best way to get them involved. I know two of the students are already in a civics class, I believe it is, they're in tenth grade. And they wanted to do something that's like a partnership between like youth council and student council, but then the ideas are getting kind of swarmed up. So I told them, I'm like, just do this, you know, because you need public support for the rights of nature. And everybody in Mashpee usually cares about, you know, the natural habitat around. So get the buy-in and get the, the help. Because a lot of what the public will need to know is education of rights of nature because it's a, a foreign concept to non-natives as far as what we know. So being able to get that education out there of what rights of nature is, why it's important. And then kind of the, how the tribal tribes work into the rights of nature and that authority and stuff. And it also gets the awareness out about tribal governance and sovereignty. Because that's a big, you know, education bump in American history that not, that's not covered everywhere. So even for our own people. So I think that'd be a good start probably.
The Earth Day thing, it always, always happens over vacation. But I would love for you to connect with Shona Vitelli, who's the Environmental Club advisor. Is it okay if I email you?
Yes, for sure. Because they're, one of their big initiatives is to put on this event for Earth Day. And they'll be, and that's where they're kind of gonna kind of present their tribal code. So they're inviting like state representatives and any sort of like local agencies and stuff like that. So it could kind of get the word out there and really present it in a formal way. And it's gonna be like a event slash dinner sort of thing. So it'd be good to get them involved.
Be good to connect anyway.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions for Talia?
On that part. I just have one other announcement that we're going to the tribal colleges for a vacation. So all Mashpee stu-, actually, there's one DY student, but there's two Mashpee students committed right now. I'm hoping to get another one on there. So Haley is not the only girl. But we're gonna be hitting three colleges in a matter of three or four days. We, we scratched off one because it was an art institute and none of the kids were interested in going into arts for that degree program. So we focused our energies on the schools, so we're able to get as much as we can in. And hopefully we'll have some decisions by that decision day. Because, but that's the other biggest thing. And, you know, if you want to get the word out there about that, we are trying to squeeze in a Haskell trip as well that's in Kansas. But, because there's a few people that got accepted into it, so as long as they apply, we're able to send them out. So if you have anybody in mind as far as tribal seniors in any school district, just let them know.
Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you. So welcome home.
Thank you. And thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, so next we have minutes from the March eighth meeting. Issue approved. Do we have any edits or changes to these? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as they stand.
Okay. Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Is there a problem?
Were you at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. But I adjourned it? Okay. Just wanted to make sure because I just saw that. I was like, wait, I didn't see that. My first read through?
Thanks Sheri.
I can make the motion to make that edit.
Yeah, we'll edit that.
That's why I was like, wait, that wasn't the meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don? Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so next is Andy Troyano's request to take the music department, the band, chorus and strings folks.
Right, so you have pages four and five of the packet, support his request. This is not the first year they've done that. They generally do it as an end of the year sort of celebration for the students who participated. It's the next to last day of school. We've gone round and round with multiple dates, but it's an out of state trip, so it requires your approval.
You want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Mashpee Middle High School Music Department trip to Canobie Lake Park on Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. First by Kathy. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any further discussion? Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. It's approved. All right, next we have Patty's report.
Okay, so first just an update on professional development. We had a full day PD on St. Patrick's Day, which was March seventeenth. And at all three schools, teachers worked in groups, they were actually mixed groups, not their normal groups, on tier one interventions. So that we have sort of a list that teachers, teachers often don't recognize all the things that they do in their classroom to support students. So this was a way to sort of gather that information and create a document that teachers will use to reference in the future. Then at all three schools, they also had some PD provided by their administrators on the No Place for Hate. And I believe the next step is, it was informing teachers and, and paraprofessionals were there that day as well about the concept. And the next step is the steering committee at each school, which will be formed within the next few weeks. And then depending on what the, the steering committee wants to do, they'll either be implementing an activity this year or planning more for next year. So that was well received. And then we had Carrie Stack for ninety minutes as a presenter for everyone in the district. She, and we had people tell us who've been here for twenty-six years, it was the best professional development they've ever had. She is similar to Kalise in sort of her ability to deliver and engage and captivate the audience. And her messaging about supporting students but self-care and reflecting on your own well-being. She infuses humor. She's just really, it was quite uplifting for everyone. We did have a visit by two puppies before lunch, which was also, the lunch was provided by our food services department and it was excellent.
There was no raffle though of the puppies.
Somebody asked that. They were adorable puppies, ready for anyone who might have had the funding required. But anyway, they were cute. And then we did have a half day this past Monday on the third. And on that day, we had more work on our portrait of a graduate. We had Kalise doing her work at the middle high school with a selected group of staff and then moving on to do the same at Coombs. And again, she does a lot of scenario work with the teachers and having conversations with the best way to approach a situation like this, which I think is very helpful, the role-playing and just because the scenarios are real. And that's what we seem to have a lot of challenges with is the difficult conversations. And that's the first step is you have to have them. And then she also was here, which I don't think I have on here, but she was here on March twenty-eighth to do her evening presentation as well. We have to do a better job of figuring out how to generate more attendees. Whether to make it much more public as a community, whether to engage in a partnership with the town. There's just so many people who need, need to hear her and often those who go are already engaged in the work. And we're not hitting, you know, all the people that we want to. But it was a wonderful learning opportunity. And that's the last one for this year in terms of an evening event for parents and guardians, but she is scheduled to do some in her contract with us for next year. That's that. Any questions on any of that? You have the enrollment sheet, page six in your packet. And you also have, it was a rather, rather quiet personnel sheet on page seven. We only had one additional member join our team, Tabisha Yazzy Lambert. I probably said her name wrong, but yes, sisal's on the first syllable there. She is a paraprofessional at the middle high school, a welcome addition. You have the update from athletic director Matt Traverry showing, you know, teams, as, as Delia just said, have gotten themselves up and running. You may recall, you did approve a baseball trip. They're leaving next Friday, I believe, or next weekend for that week. The night, was that Monday night, when we had senior projects presented, the baseball team was there and they were all, you know, riding high because they had had their first game against Monomoy and they won. And so that's always a great feeling when you start off that way. But the point is to enjoy playing and to learn some of those social skills that go along with athletics. So hopefully we have all the teams covered with coaches. In some cases, we brought on some assistants based on size. And if you ever want to hit any of those home games, you see the ones that are coming up.
It is fun to see the, the fields all full again and all the things going on. And then I saw something on, I don't know if it was Facebook or whatever, but it was, it was showing the lacrosse game that finished at seven something. Pointing out that, you know, we have lights on our field now and they were using the turf. And it was just, it was kind of cool to see it in, in practice.
Maybe they're using it now where it's dim, like the lights are on to, yeah.
Yeah.
You have Consuelo Carroll's report in the packet as well. One thing I think of interest that I was gonna highlight was the outreach site allows for such great opportunities for our students. So senior Will Chapman did his photography show there and that was his senior project. And he had seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in sales with that money going to the association to preserve Cape Cod. So if anyone didn't get, I think it's still going on until the fourteenth, but his work is for sale. I asked him the other day, so. He's donating all his proceeds. Yes, to that. So that's a, so really unique and wonderful opportunity for our kids. And we do have our administrators here and I know we sort of had that Red Cross. I don't know if Principal Brian wants to share like a couple highlights. I know you had an event yesterday and today. Your favorite event?
Oh, that's not an event.
It is an event.
There are many hospitals.
Be careful, don't trip it.
There we go. I was like, sir, library, you know? Hello.
Hi, everyone. I think the most exciting thing, we just finished ELAMcast yesterday and today. And I just want to thank all of the families too, because for the combined days, we only had fourteen absences, which was amazing. So our students were here. They worked so hard. Our staff was fully present both days. It was calm. It went through really very smooth. And so I was so happy and so thankful really that all of the kids were here. Everyone was on time. It's like, yes. It was really great. So one down, we have math in May and science for our fifth graders in May as well. So we hope to have that same success. But that was really great. Friday, we are looking forward to the Mashpee Middle High School students coming down for the carnival, the energy carnival with Cape Light Compact. And it's really a great day where all of our kids go through the gym, do different stations. They spend about an hour in the gym by grade level and it's, it's just really a great experience for them. And Amanda Howe does really train all of those high school students so well on how to prepare those stations and, and really take the lead in teaching our kids here at Quashnet. So it's just a wonderful partnership and I thank the, the high school very much for that. Thank you, Dr. Minette. So it's a great opportunity. Alright, things are good.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want to acknowledge Principal O'Brien's ownership of the entire MCAS process. I was here waiting to go to the senior event on Monday night and it was around five o'clock. And she was still going around classrooms to make sure they met the standard that's required for whatever's on the walls or on desk, everything. So she takes it, you know, to that level of detail to make sure it's all right. So I appreciate that.
Those little nameplates, you know, they hide those what to do with a word you don't know. Thank you.
And I don't know if Dr. Minette, if you want to share anything about Monday night or the senior project night?
Gotta do some hyenas to get over here.
I'm just, I'm wowed by Monday night with the senior presentations and I still keep talking about it. And I think we've generated some more ideas about getting the juniors looking at those so that they can kind of build the excitement. But I, I said to Mrs. DeBoer when I walked out that night that as a mom and my kids not going through Mashpee, I get angry that they never had the opportunities that I've seen repeatedly this year. Just seeing kids and seeing their interest level and just to see it from start to finish. And I was a part of these, this process that they have to come in and present to me and then I have to sign off. And, you know, some of them, I've given them some pointers and just to see it fully evolve, it was an unbelievable night. Right now, we are entering the fourth quarter. Yes, we are there. And I know you're excited. And I know you're excited about it. I'm panicked. So we're talking about scheduling and right now, we're talking about graduation. We just met this afternoon to roll out the final exam schedule, which is looking a little bit complicated because of the ninth graders going to DC, but I think we have figured out a good option for that. Sports are alive and well. Field trips are happening. End-of-the-year stuff is coming fast and furious. I'm, yeah, I've never seen this move so quickly. It's just a lot and it just doesn't slow down. But it's all good energy, good energy. So, I think there was something else with the seniors.
Tomorrow's Credit for Life.
Tomorrow is Credit for Life. I'm excited about that. I'm a huge fan of Credit for Life. So I can't wait to see how that plays out. And again, that's another senior project and I think he's a little nervous about it, but he, I'm sure will knock it out of the ballpark. We got to go to a really nice event last night honoring one of our students, Katrina Mann, who's just an absolute delight. And it was nice just to see the facility and to be able to spend time with her parents. And then I'm going next week for, it's through the MIA dinner to recognize two of our athletes. That's, looks like it's going to be a great time, too.
Thank you.
I want to, oh, I knew you were going to ask me this. One is Anastasia and then the other one is Lucas? Does that sound right?
Just a helium?
Maybe. I just saw it today. I just, it was just handed to me before I left the office. So I'm excited. I'm trying to think what else am I?
It's usually the two seniors that are like scholar athletes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I didn't know what the recognition was for.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, there's, male and a female.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I think that's it. Am I forgetting anything, please?
Not that I know.
I have a meeting about prom, so that's coming up. And they're going to start selling tickets next week for prom. It's all this end-of-the-year stuff. Seniors are really excited to be done.
Yeah.
I can feel it. So, that's it.
Any questions?
No, I did notice that the, we have two school committee members with kids in the musical and the musical's not on the calendar, so we'd better get that on there.
We do go up. Yeah, you do.
It's not on here, so let's get that on the calendar. We need to make sure.
Do a big promo.
I'm not convinced my kid's going to know our lines by then, but it sounds.
We've been running lines nightly in our house, so I might be in play at this point. If anybody's sick, I can fill in.
Will they call that the backup?
What is that called?
Understudy.
Understudy, thank you. I don't know if you're, you're the understudy. That's good to know. I'm going to make sure I say that to her tomorrow. Like, don't screw this up because we're calling mom in.
Yeah, but there is a lot on this calendar. There's a lot happening.
There is a lot happening.
And that's just your main focus.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Give it a big spread.
Yeah.
And Principal O'Brien, do you want to, and I did, I know you have a knee issue, so come this way, please. Do not go that way.
My gosh. I can't fall down.
No. Well, you can, but we don't want you to.
I just won't get back up. That's it.
So, from the high school to the little guys. We've been really busy. I'm just going to hit on some highlights. Good evening, by the way, sorry. And I apologize for being late. I thought it was 5:30. I don't, sorry.
It usually is.
Okay, because I'm usually not late.
Yeah.
So we had a, the PTO sponsored a game night at our school and it was a giant game night. So the kids did Hungry Hungry Hippos with laundry baskets, rolling on those things in the gym, trying to get balls, things like that. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was really well-attended. All of our events have been really well-attended. We did the Title I bedtime stories and the kids came in their jammies and we had tents set up with little finger flashlights and all kinds of things, hot chocolate. It was really well-attended. Like, there was a line to the door for hot chocolate. I was amazed.
Can I shout out to the Title I folks who really donated that? So, Ally Cohane, who is the elementary literacy coach for Quashnet Coombs, this is the first year we've had that position. She is doing it. So she and Janet McNally, who was a first-grade teacher and moved into reading specialist role this year, co-planned it as our, you have to have at least one Title I night under the federal law. So I have to give them shout-outs.
They also wore.
Because they were so excited.
Matching bathrobes.
Matching bathrobes. And I have, I had Title I money, so I was like, "Send me your wish list on Amazon Business" and.
Well, it's going to grow because next year, they're getting more tents because the kids were in line.
While I have it.
Send it to me.
I want to know about these finger flashlights. Oh, they're so cool. So you can read in the tent in the dark, but the flashlight, just you follow the, and it's good for tracking.
That's cool.
Which is a literacy skill that we're trying to build. Sorry, I get very excited.
You just put it on your finger. I know, we're.
We're dark together.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking for my nephew, that sounds cool.
Totally.
It's a great idea. And they're like, you know, you can get 10 of them for like $10.
And your mother doesn't know because you don't have a giant flashlight in your bed. All right. Just a small one.
Those will be there.
Right. Let's see, Meg Smith has been working on, just finished up a unit on the Iditarod with the second graders. So we had a woman come in who is an actual musher and she brought her sled, a bunch of her equipment, and she brought her lead dog, Noggin, who, who you would think would be, I don't know, like a, like a big dog lead, but they're not. They're small, they're fast, they're, it was ama, what a great presentation she did. The kids were.
How'd she get connected with them?
Oh, it's Meg Smith. She gets connected with everybody.
Wow.
Yeah. It was really nice. A couple of weeks before that, we had somebody on video chat, also a woman musher. And so she had put on all the clothes and she was, she had shown us her dogs and how they go to sleep when they get tired. It was really interesting, very interesting. Our art teacher, Jackie Freel, she brought in her parents, John and Ann Hassett, and they read to the kids and showed them how to make a book. And they gave them a couple of drawing lessons and the kids loved it. They loved it. We have our kindergarten spring music concert Friday at 2:45. You know, you don't want to miss that. It's not exactly like the high school concert, but it's close. And today was picture day, so you should have seen all the kids in bow ties and slicked-back hair and ball gowns. It was lovely. They were, they were awesome. They were so cute. And those are my highlights. It's been a lot going on. It's been very busy, very fun. Any questions? No, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, so next I have on the agenda is hashtag #WeAreMashpee, location change. So I don't have all the answers to this right now. We are still in the problem-solving mode. We didn't have a rather, well, an hour-long meeting yesterday with some powers that be that didn't actually end in the result we were seeking at this time, anyway. But we have to be out of our certain, our space very quickly. There's movement of the pieces over there. We are looking at a space that's, that was the old, I think, New Balance. If you're going towards Stop and Shop, it's right as you head in there. They are definitely subdividing that space, but the space we would be given is our current size plus another 600 square feet, so it's good. And then the idea was to really grow into this sort of maker space because the only other maker space is down Cape and we're still working towards that. But the slight glitch is we have the option to go into the bank, which I don't know what bank that used to be, but the yellow building that's by itself. There is a potential renter coming in there eventually, but we could go there temporarily. We can also put our things into this new space. However, we can't really open because they're doing renovations. So that looks like about a four-month of not having this space.
Even the New Balance one?
At the New Balance one, because that's where they have to put up a wall and do some other changes. And so then it was, well, shall we go to the bank for four months and then make the move? And then we did just communicate, you know, we, Consuelo's talked to some movers. It's a little pricey, you know, to move more than once, even to move once, but we're going to end up using some of our STEM interns at the middle high school to pretty much do the move. We have the ability to get access to a truck. So I'm not sure at this point, we don't know which we're going into. Either it's temporarily at the bank and be open and functioning somewhat for four months or it's working behind the scenes, doing what we can, but not being open for four months, but having all our stuff in the new space. And there has to be a follow-up conversation that might be around money. That's why Ashley was invited to the meeting yesterday, but we didn't get to that topic. So anyway, you know, it is what it is because we, we have to move when they have renters. But they do very much appreciate us being there and see the value in us being there. So I feel like we're going to reach a happy place in the middle. Anyway, that's, that's pretty much that. Recognizations, acknowledgements. You have on page 13 a list of all sort of recent recipients of grants. These are the smaller grants that generally, as you can see, come from Cape Cod Five Foundation. You see who received them and sort of the title of their project. We did receive two large grants to support two music enhancements basically at the middle high school. The Cape Cod Foundation, the Lou Colombo Music Fund, $4,000 for the Alex Torres and His Latin Orchestra. They came last June and they were really impactful and it's a fabulous experience. So luckily, we're able to bring them back. And then another $4,000 from the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod. And that is supporting Morgan Peters, who's doing sort of the Caribbean music and workshops for students on multiple weeks as well. But anyway, there's some interesting information and hopefully we can have some of these people come and share at some point the results of their projects. The only other recognitions is I believe that this is Assistant Principals Week. So I do want to acknowledge we have four amazing assistant principals. Albert Mercado and Riwa Melby both work at the middle high school, although their titles are dean, but they're getting changed. And then Brian Carroll at this school and Brian Pranat at the Coombs School. And then apparently today is April, as April 5th is Paraprofessional Appreciation Day and we have 31 amazing paraprofessionals who work in this district to pretty much do anything they're asked to do and they do it so well and they really value our students. So I am so grateful that we have them. So thank you for supporting that in the budget.
Absolutely.
Skip for mine. Okay. So next, we have Ashley.
Can you have the, all the standards of my time for budget before? Do you see questions from Gonsey that I responded back to them? They're really just four different standards here to see what we really need. And I don't have a, but if I'm looking at that and have more to share the next meeting, do you have any additional questions?
I didn't have any. I was just, I was thinking about you as they were talking about the end of the school year and like, oh, yeah, it's a really, really fun time for Ashley. So, yeah, I think I didn't have any specific ones for that you.
Nope. That's good.
I was curious with gate receipts, you know, now that we've got much more activity around our athletic events and things like that, are we spending that money in? Okay.
We, every year in the budget, there is an offset from that revolving account that is your general fund, approximately $1,000.
Okay.
And if we don't use it all, then we roll over to next year. Sometimes there are bigger one-time items that we look to spend out of that account. So yesterday, it's something.
And we had, you know, we started the year without a trainer and we had a kind of that expensive cost for paying for a EMT at every game until we hired the trainer. So did we budget for that EMT for the whole year and was that coming out of revolving or is that in the general? Like, did we get some savings there because we hired somebody or was it?
It wasn't a huge cost at the end of the day because it wasn't every single day the person was there. It was just our games. We used it as a tracking service that we charged at the general fund at the athletic grounds. I mean, if you can have it on.
Okay, I was just curious. And are trainers happy?
It's very important to keep.
Yes. Good. All right. I have nothing else for Ashley, so.
After I tell you more budgets also on the agenda, I don't have enough to start left.
Okay. Yeah, all right, great, thank you. There was nothing in the packet, I thought that.
No, based on probably the next week's timeline, I think it's after the conference, so we should know by this group. But our fiscal pay voted budget, I'll move forward.
Yes, that's May 1st. Tell your friends. Need every voter. Okay, so next, we have the Student Advisory Committee. Is this you?
Yep. I met with Brian Brody and six members of the student council at the middle high school on March 13th. I kind of presented, you know, what the law states, how it's supposed to be formed and comprised. They were going to then kind of talk with the committee, the student council at large because it wasn't the whole council there that day. I do need to follow up. I wanted to give it kind of a little time to settle because I didn't know when their next meeting was, but I'm going to circle back to Brian Brody on that. They are aware that election for the Student Advisory Council must happen in June. So they are aware of, you know, the timeline of it and we talked about that. We talked about what would be involved is sitting at our table here and, you know, what that entails and what that looks like. I provided them with the handbook from MASK for Student Advisory Council, you know, for the youth portion, because MASK does have that handbook. So they have all the information and I kind of wanted them to digest it before I circled back around, which is going to be probably like a week or two where I'll just kind of touch base and see if there are questions, if they need help organizing the elect, you know, like what I can do to help support the election. And then I talked about the NSBA conference and the sessions I went to, I can kind of tie that into.
Is the intention that they would, so the election's in June and then do they start when they come back to school or do they do it July?
It depends, I mean, some districts would let students have the summer off. Some districts have them come year-round. You know, they'd be welcome to come to the retreat if they wanted and I let them know of that. You know, I let them know our tentative retreat date so that they knew, like, if you did want, if you did get into this advisory council, whoever you're appointed, it would only be the appointed, you know, member that would sit with us that would be at that. And I let them know that that would be something they would obviously be welcome to. I let them know about the, you know, the every other month meeting with the committee, you know, quorum of the committee at large and how, you know, planning agendas and all, kind of just ran through the whole thing in the half-hour that I had with them before.
You scared them all away.
No, actually, I don't, I don't think I did. It was a good group of kids. I mean, Caroline, Caroline Cotton was there, one of Eve Man, maybe, was there. I wish I could remember his name. He's in band.
Andrew?
Yes, Andrew, thank you. He was taking notes the whole time because he's the secretary. And there were a couple other, you know, kids who were there that sounded very intrigued by this, you know, presenting the whole idea of you're going to have more of a say in, in everything and not just, you know, like, you'll be able to tell us the good stuff, but you're also going to be able to affect the changes throughout the district on behalf of the students. So it was a good, good meeting and looking forward to the next steps.
Great, thank you. We're like, pens are flying tonight.
There's a little more spring in the clickers.
There you go.
All right, thanks, Kathy. Any liaison meetings or working groups to report out on?
Well, we're going to talk about superintendent. We're going to talk about the year-end goal updates, but that, we had that meeting yesterday. So I'll leave that for later.
Great. Okay, so we have new business, first item we're going to discuss but vote on the next meeting. I think you have a handout on your table.
So, the Hall of Flags that's currently at Mashpee Middle High School, which is also a senior project for Tristan Walker, started because of a social studies teacher, Michael Ford. He was part of the staff that opened that school. He moved from this school up to there. And he did do a lot of outside-of-classroom growth for kids and activities and community-focused and was really the, the kind of teacher that really went above and beyond and enriched kids' lives in ways that not everybody does. So, the current layout up there has this display of the map with pushpins that shows where each flag's country is. And then there was an essay related to Michael Ford there. This is an updated version of the essay.[1759.23] This is an updated version of the essay. We are going to connect with his widow in terms of a better picture when we formally put the essay in the case. But you also have a rendering from Day Sign Company. We would like to make it much more of an impactful space in his honor, and so it would be named the Michael J. Ford Hall of Flags, which is really was a project that started with him. And I know that Kathy wanted to share some thoughts because she has the unique perspective of having been a student in this district, so in many situations she is connected.
I just, this really makes me happy. Like, when I saw it on the agenda, I, I will admit, I smiled. I had Mr. Ford as a fifth grade reading teacher, and he's one of those teachers that definitely made an impact on my life, you know, from his deep love of puns, the day he came in wearing teabags on every button of his shirt and said, "What? It's my T-shirt." Or the day he wore a lampshade as a hat for the day because he had bright ideas. He was just that kind of teacher, but on the same hand, you know, he, he became a social studies teacher, you know, later on, but I had him as a reading and ELA teacher. And he taught us how to write business letters. We all had to pick a, a place, like a legitimate business, and we mailed them, our question or our comments on their business. And if we got, you know, some kids got letters back, but I just, the things that he taught in the classroom really stuck with me, and he was definitely one of those educators that when you look back, you know, as an adult and think about those teachers that really made a difference, he was one of them, you know, and I, I went to school with his son, Tim, and that sad story there, but just he was one of those guys that even after Tim passed, he still gave a hundred and ten percent to the students of Mashpee. And we were really lucky, I feel, to have had him as a teacher in our district, and I know people that are my age who had him most likely feel the same because he really was just one of those teachers. So I think this honor is really fitting and I'm very excited to vote for it next week, I won't lie. I was kind of like, oh, are we voting tonight? So I, I, this really does make me very proud, and I think it's a very fitting tribute to a really great teacher.
And I think it's, you know, I can guarantee that we do prove this, but we will designate a certain, you know, maybe different company, because I would love to get a lot of the money coming. Thanks for sharing that.
Of course.
So we were hoping for the star next to it.
All right, so now we're on page seventeen of the packet.
You also have a handout packet that we're discussing.
Yeah.
On page seventeen is sort of the evaluation timeline related to our role, and the only change to what was in the packet is that the subcommittee members have had a new option. Kathy, I'll take it, I alternate because Brian was not unable to make it. So the one is that you have a packet.
Thank you.
And so if, I'm going to sort of go through the packet that you have in front of you. The process and since you've all been here last year, you might recall, but once I go over the update of my goals this evening, it is posted on the website as well. I did share it electronically with everyone today, not with an intention that you were going to look at it today, but that between now and when you have to complete your Google Forms, you will have an opportunity to look at it and click any of the links there. So tomorrow you will receive four separate Google Form links as an email, and those are actually in this packet. That's what they look like. So you have a hard copy to go by and then you can go in and actually do it. They're on the, the four domains there of Instructional Leadership Management and Operations, Family and Community Engagement, and Professional Culture. And so when you do those, they go to a spreadsheet that Mrs. Vanitski gets, and we're asking that you've completed your four separate Google Forms by April thirteenth. That's all five of you. And then the resulting spreadsheet that's created will be something that the chair can use to complete the one combined school committee evaluation that is done through Teach Point. And that, the only other piece is that on Tuesday, May second, there will be a meeting that I have with the chair where she reviews what the school committee's evaluation is in advance of the public meeting on the third, which is also the chair's last meeting.
What time is that on May second?
It's eight-thirty, but we have a coffee meeting that morning, so if there's a way to have it after that, that would be good.
That's.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the process?
One, so I think the past practice has been that if you provide anything other than meeting expectations, which is the middle.
Proficient.
Proficient.
Yeah, proficient.
You, you're asked to provide a comment. So oftentimes I don't get a whole lot of comments from the committee, but that's valuable feedback for the superintendent, particularly if you're going to elevate her rating, it's nice to provide that rationale, and certainly if you're going to ding her for something, she has a right to know what, what your, your inclination is behind that.
And each Google Form at the very end has shared any additional thoughts here, so that's what Nicole will reference when the spreadsheet is printed out.
Is it possible, not this time, but next time around, since we're doing this in a Google Form, that we can put the feedback next to the question or next to the response versus having it all at the end?
Oh, we could do that. We can do that before it gets sent out. We can.
Because it's, you know, in the moment, you're thinking about why you made a decision and what it ties to versus you get to the bottom and now you have to kind of tie it all back.
So like under standard one A curriculum, having a free response under that question.
Particularly, yeah.
Doesn't align with what the evaluation ends up looking.
I, no, I know, but for.
But for me to track it, I remember we did have a little bit of a discussion last year about anonymity.
Yes, I was going to ask that question.
So do you want to talk about that?
Anonymity in responding to the Google Forms?
In our comments. It was later requested that we put our names on the comments, so.
Well, I provided attribution in the summary evaluation, and I think at least one committee member was sort of surprised that that was happening, so I want to just make sure that we're all clear on what the expectation is. Certainly if, if you provide comments for a less than proficient score, in keeping with sort of our philosophy with everything from student comments to everything else that it gives the superintendent an opportunity to address those comments with that evaluator. So if they were to main, if they were to be anonymous, then there was really no way for the superintendent to know on that. The same is true on the, on the opposite end, although I think it's less important maybe on that end, but, but that is kind of the, the practice. Is that okay?
No, that was, I wasn't the one, I was just going to ask for clarification, thank you, I wasn't saying I didn't ask you.
Yes, I just want to make sure that everybody's.
I was making sure we were clear, that was my question was, so that we didn't have the same conversation we had last year.
Carol, don't write anything you could not say to her face.
Exactly.
Because you might have to.
I think that might have been the issue with the analogy, because then it was like.
I know this is my jam, but I oversee evaluation of the teachers and all of that, so just because you don't do this for a living, would love to give you some feedback on the process of if you're giving a negative comment or feedback, it should have been something you spoke to the superintendent about already, because it should not just show up on the value.
Yeah, especially not at the end of the year, yeah.
Again, that's how we operate with teachers and carers and other administrators, and I think the superintendent should be given that same level, you know, the ability to have a conversation before she goes into public. And that's not personally about Patty, that's just best practice for evaluating.
All right, so, so now you're going to take us through, you're going to take you through the documents, and we are looking pretty good on time.
Okay. So you saw this document, I believe, in January, and obviously the first page is our Plan for Success, highlighting which initiatives we're focused on this year. Those ten initiatives that have the school year twenty-two, twenty-three are what are listed under the District Improvement Goal, which is the next three pages. And so you see the initiative on the left, and then you see on the right is Evidence of Implementation. Like I say, when you look at this electronically, there are links there for some samples that you might want. If you have any questions as you are looking at this on your own time, you can just, you know, send me an email, send me a text if there's something that you're wondering about. I would be happy to try to provide any information that I don't have here. The first initiative, Identify Grade Level Expectations for Each Portrait of a Graduate Competency, and I do want to say that all of my goals cannot be accomplished without the team of administrators that are in this district and likewise the team of teachers that are in this district, because I've just sort of tried to do what I can to support. In many of the initiatives, we are doing this together. So we have had our grade level teams working on identifying the portrait of a graduate at each grade level. I will say we've gone through various iterations of this, trying to make sure we're producing the document that's going to be most helpful. It looks a little different, we ended up with for the pre-K to sixth than it does seven through twelve. It's meant to be something that a new teacher could come in and say, okay, I understand that this is evidence that these kids can show me at this grade level of that competency. Higher level, we're getting into the e-portfolios, which we are not as spread out as we should be, but that's meant where a student can pick a piece of work and submit it and show their growth over time as well. And there were some suggested examples that kids would be assigned that they could use for that. So that is that initiative. And then I will say too, when we go further into this document, there's a lot of overlap. So second initiative is communicate our portrait of a graduate competencies to all stakeholders. As you know, we are working hard to make sure those are clearly represented in our lesson plans and that not just being in there, but coming alive in the actual learning that kids are doing and they're recognizing it. The fifth graders did their presentation here to the school committee. I wanted to highlight that that was evidence. A Friday communication, we tried to focus on it. The portrait of a graduate is included on most, all of our communications. You know, unplanned but observed was just this past Monday when Celeste Reynolds, who's in charge of the senior project, she did the introduction in the auditorium to all the students and all the parents that were there, and in her own introduction, she linked everything to the portrait of a graduate and how students had demonstrated that through this project. And then I will say, when I was walking through, there was one particular student, I can't remember which one it was now, but on his poster itself, displaying his senior project, he had the smaller version of the portrait of a graduate. I'm like, oh, I love that you put that on there, and he could explain some of the pieces, why he put it on there. So that was good, a little bit of growth there. If you have questions along the way, just say, stop. Third initiative, Analyze and Expand District-Wide Systems to Ensure All Students, Especially Those From Historically Marginalized Groups, Can Access the Entire Scope of Opportunities. We have done some work with this. This is a very big undertaking and one that will probably be on here for all of the remaining years. One of the pieces that I would focus on here that I've most enjoyed is our Student Advisory Council that we meet with monthly. They have been able to give us really good insights. We ask them questions about certain things, and then they also just volunteer topics that end up informing us. And then we have started, we have the beginnings of our audit of all of the different programming, whether it's clubs, sports teams, any opportunities, music programs, you know, honor societies, what is the breakdown of student involvement there as a starting point to see what's lacking, which I could predict certain areas that are very lacking, but we need that baseline in order to put some changes in place. The next one is Establish Student Voice Opportunities to Impact or Influence Outcomes. Again, it's the Student Advisory Council, our students coming and sharing at school committee meetings like they did this evening, the feedback and thoughts on the 2023 Student Opinion Survey from grades five through twelve. Teacher candidates are teaching lessons to students, and then we're getting input from the students on what they thought. And then just most recently, the fifth and sixth graders here at Quashen, the student council, were actually involved with the formal interviews of three of our principal finalists. So from three to three-thirty, those students asked questions and then had extra conversation when there was time. And then also the interview committee, which I believe had eleven members, had a fifth grade student who was asked to be on the committee, recommended by Principal O'Brien as someone who would be here next year to have a year with that principal. So that's what we're doing there. Provide Training to Ensure a District-Wide Culture of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is the next initiative that is mostly focused around the work that Kalise is doing, and both with students, with staff, and in some cases, a small group of parents. The assistant principals attended a two-day restorative practices workshop and have implemented that, that learning piece. I believe some other people have gone to a more recent, eight more recent as well. The Native American Heritage Month activities in all three schools, the Black History Month activities, which this year for the first time included assemblies at each school from the Cape Verdean population in Falmouth area, and those were very well-received assemblies. And then our work with the tribe, we have our quarterly meetings, they did an orientation for new employees, they did a full-day workshop on the twenty-third that quite a few of us took, and then they're currently engaged with the ten-week culture-based course for educators, and we have twenty-two Mashpee educators taking it. It's what, ninety minutes, pretty much weekly for the ten weeks, and there are Falmouth educators taking it with us as well, which is great. The next initiative, Renew Our MTSS Framework with All Staff and Ensure Implementation There with Fidelity. So we, you can reference the documents linked there, our new employee orientation, and then a presentation that we did to the high school staff on the, on December fifth as a refresher. Last year we worked on this as well, where I visited a lot of the staff meetings. Then we continue like at my level to work with principals to make sure that we're paying attention to what's going on in the classrooms, and some of that work that we did on the seventeenth, tier-one intervention work is tied into MTSS. The next initiative, Develop a System That identifies Instructional Resources and Strategies That Are Targeted to Meet Each Student's Needs Within Tier One and Tier Two. Those are tiers that every teacher can address within their classroom setting. Tier one obviously is meant for almost, pretty much all students, and tier two are additional scoops that some students need, but definitely can be delivered in a classroom setting. But then that creates sort of the how for many teachers, and so we have created a source for, a reference source, and you can access that classroom as well to look at what we have put in there as sort of quick reference tools for our teachers. The next one is Provide Relevant Staff Professional Development. This is on that third pillar, which is the MTSS, and so again, it's referencing the same items linked above. Those overlap a little to me. The next one, Renew and Cultivate Community Partnerships with the Intention of Improving Outcomes for All Stakeholders. There is a list there, I think it goes a little bit onto the next page, of things that I personally am involved with, and realizing that all of our principals are involved in many activities as well that I may not necessarily be involved with. I know we have a really strong connection of volunteers with Southport Falcons in the schools, but I don't necessarily see them in that setting when I'm interacting with them. So a lot on that list. And then regularly gather information and feedback from stakeholders to inform future planning. Those are some of the things that we're working on, the No Place for Hate Staff PD at each school, which took place on the seventeenth, and the steering committees, those, the steering committees include students, and that will help us sort of expand voice and plan, more voices involved with planning. The opinion survey and for both families and students, which the data share out will be in July in terms of detail. I'll make sure I give the chair an extra piece of that, where she's not going to be there for that. The partnership meetings, outreach working group provided input on the 2023 survey questions, the superintendent's advisory council provided input, and then we had a parent guardian focus group to provide input as well. The listening tours that I have put back into place this year, and I'll have one more at each school in May, and those are very helpful to me. And then the council meetings and then preparation of the annual budget. And then down below, I just sort of tried to capture from my perspective with each of the initiatives where I felt significant progress. Like I said, most of these are going to be ongoing with not just this year in terms of our work.
Yes, so the ones that are met are not things that, it's not like you're not doing relevant staff development, professional development next year.
Right, right.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Then, the student learning goal, and this is a shared goal with administrators as well as many of our teachers. You didn't have to adopt the same goal, but it does help to move us somewhat in the same direction when we're all sort of in agreement. So, this one is, for this year, in collaboration with district and school leaders, I will support educators in the consistent use of research-based instructional strategies to increase student engagement and to improve relationships with students, resulting in increased student agency and achievement. And for me, I've talked about this a lot, it all comes down to building those positive relationships with students. It is not, in my opinion, heavy lifting to do that, but it has to be prioritized, and it does make a difference in student learning when students feel that you see them as a, not just a student, that you are interested in their wellbeing beyond whether an assignment is completed or not. And we have teachers who are exceptional at that, and we have teachers that find that a little bit more of a struggle. And so, we try to make sure we give resources to everyone with that shared goal, that it will make a difference for our kids. And so, the action steps under that goal is, in collaboration with building administrators, I will provide resources to support educators in their use of research-based instructional strategies. This goes right back to that, those bigger 10 initiatives under the district goal. The second one, in collaboration with building administrators, I will plan, implement, determine funding for professional development for educators that provides them with research-based instructional strategies that, when implemented, will allow them to achieve their student learning goal. And so, there is the PD plan there that's linked there. Obviously, the budgets need to support the work that we do. We have the opportunity, and we're fortunate enough, to go to workshops and conferences, which then allow us to connect with PD providers that we want for our teachers as well. And so, that's, we've been able to bring some great people here because of that. The next one, I will support principals by reviewing their observations of educator practice and the growth feedback they provide to educators. So, it's regularly, I look at the Teach Point, which is called vector forms, announced and unannounced observations that our principals have completed, not just principals, it's also assistant principals. And I really kind of look at, we've all had the RBT training, which is this approach to how we evaluate and its claim, claims and evidence and the impact on the learner. So, I look for that in the feedback that they're giving to the teachers, whether they recognize whatever aspects they feel were in the observed lesson that is impacting student learning in a good way. And sometimes, they have to give other advices to improve, so I see that. In collaboration with district school leaders, I will participate in quarterly educator evaluation calibration meetings. There is, I believe that first link is from that, the first meeting we had in the summer. We've had two more. I will say, the one that we had most recently, we were able, and it was done by Zoom, because it's really hard to pull these people out during, you know, 45, or however long that was, an hour maybe? An hour and 15 minutes. But we were able to identify, well, I pulled from Teach Point, different unannounced observations that were done. We whited out any reference to who did it and the teacher, but it does allow us to see if we're sort of aligned with how we do our evaluations, which is what, something that the goal, the teachers are seeking for us to be very well-aligned. Like I've always said, with students, it shouldn't matter which fifth-grade teacher you get, you should all sort of leave fifth grade with similar experiences. It might be delivered in a more entertaining way or whatever. But the same is true when we evaluate our staff. It shouldn't make a difference which evaluator you get, they should be able to see the same things, write it up in a similar way, and offer the feedback and growth that we want. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Student learning goal.
The, the observations of educator practice, you just said regular review.
Oh, you would like it more specific?
Yeah, just, how, how many do we do in a year? I mean, is that different? I mean, but you're citing that as your evidence.
Yeah, so I go in there every week, out of curiosity mostly. And not that I'm trying to monitor my principals, but I also have to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But I, sometimes I might have been in a classroom and it leaves me wondering, so I'll go in and look. But it's definitely weekly that I go and look, but I don't know how many I really look at weekly. But I could be more regularly with that, regularly with that.
And I had one question, just, sorry, moved into that second one quickly. I just want to clarify, on the bottom of this page, this.
Chart?
Yeah, this chart. This refers to the district strategic plan. This isn't you saying, I made significant progress on, this isn't a.
This is a we. So, I was looking at this, feeling I should add a little narrative to this, because this is a reflection on this year of our plan. And these are initiatives. So, it's not me, it's, it is a we.
Right.
Feeling that way, it's my opinion.
Yeah, and then that's part of your overall performance, but it's, I just, it's not like you're rating yourselves on these.
No, no.
I just wanted to make sure the committee was aware of that.
Yes. Yeah, no, I'm not rating myself. Feel free to disagree with that. And then the last goal area is the professional practice goal. And again, working with our administrators to guide and support educators in the explicit incorporation of Mashpee's Portrait of a Graduate Competencies and Descriptors into their daily lesson plans, objectives, instructional practices, and assessments. And so, this is definitely in collaboration with the building administrators who are able to look at the lesson plans. I do not look at them, but I do go in classrooms and I look for a connection to them. I will say, last year, when I spent a little time at the middle high school and had specific teachers that I did actually evaluate and look at their lesson plans, and maybe I just got super great crap of them, but they, I was always sort of blown away by how they included it in, in the slides, in the lesson plan, and in their actual verbalizing and messaging to kids throughout the lesson. So, there are many, many teachers who are masters at incorporating it into their plans and assessments and all of that. So, there are five action steps under this particular goal. And it's, I will continue to review and reinforce Mashpee's Portrait of a Graduate Competencies Descriptors with all Mashpee educators. And again, this is overlapping somewhat with what we had already talked about. But it is doing the best we can to communicate the expectation that this is really important to us, and it's not, we're not going to end up having graduates who have the competencies and understand the why behind it if they don't know what they are. Like, this really has to be a piece, and it's, again, in my opinion, not difficult to do. I will communicate our Portrait of Graduate Competencies and Descriptors to all stakeholders, so we try to get that in to most of our communications. And we do have that as a survey question too, which I'll be able to report. I don't recall exactly how each school responded to that. We slightly tweaked, I think, the question this year, just because we wanted it to give us a little bit more information. I will schedule adequate professional development and PLC time for educators to work on integrating Portrait of Graduate Competencies Descriptors into those lesson plans, practices, and assessments. So, the PD plan is there, those are the specific half-days that the agendas have shown there as time set aside for doing this work. And like I say, it has evolved over time to the point where it is now, where I believe everybody is in agreement that the resulting document is what we want it to be. So, I will, kudos to teachers who sort of traveled this journey with us, because they didn't, they would do one sort of iteration, and we'd look at it, and we're like, okay, this is not exactly getting at what we were looking for. So then, with their help, we were reforming it, trying to make, not add work to them, and so, it's in a good place. It's in a good place right now. I will support principals reviewing their observations of educator practice, so there's the regular review again. But definitely, having conversations with principals about when they see things that, you know, they want to, you know, shout, shout about, and then some things when they're concerned about, and helping them. Sometimes have the difficult conversations that we need to have. Having difficult conversations is a challenge in many aspects of our work. And the last one, in collaboration with district and school leaders, I will participate in quarterly educator evaluation calibration meetings. So, again, that's overlapping, but that is an important part, because it ties into what they see in terms of the classroom instruction, assessments, and lesson plans. So.
Great, thank you. So, committee members, if they have questions about any of these, as they're conducting their evaluations, they should reach out to you directly?
Whatever, extra evidence, or anything about what's up.
Or if you're sort of like, why didn't you mention this? That's helpful as well.
Sure.
Don, did you have a comment or a question?
No.
So, thank you. And let's see, we've just got a couple more items, we've got about 15 minutes left. So, everybody's clear on what they need to do with the superintendent eval? Thank you for that. And then, we are going to, next, the, so we have our self-evaluation. So, this is the school committee, sort of, this is a, just a Google form questionnaire that you'll recall filling out for the last, any number of years. I'm not going to be here at your retreat in August, but I suggest maybe you take a look at this and see if you want to tweak it moving forward.
So, the reason, and Kathy's going to tell you, but I put it in this time, because unlike past years, and maybe last year, we didn't change it because it's all the same.
Yeah.
But this year, I wondered about whether it was good to move between now and the May 3rd meeting, just because you have five members who can truly reflect. And then, when we have the retreat in the summer, yes, we will have a new member, but the new member generally wouldn't necessarily come. No, so that was an option of whether you wanted to complete it now. It would still be something that we're booked at, at the retreat, but it would capture the five of you. And then Kathy wanted to share a little bit, and I just didn't.
Yeah. It actually dovetails perfectly into this. So, the pre-conference workshop that I attended, I was at the NSDA conference Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I didn't attend Monday, but the, Friday was an all-day session for me, and it was about, it was titled, Using the Board Self-Assessment to Improve Student Achievement. And it was presented by two professors and a woman, administrator from the Washington State School, like their, their version of Desi. And what they found, and what they were able to tie, like, with solid research, was that the more a school committee works cohesively and agrees on the goals that they set, the more they are able to influence improvement in scores, in test scores. And they were able to statistically, like, show that, they had a 72 question, which I know kind of makes all of us cringe at the thought of that, but they had five standards that they set. And that's kind of why Superintendent DeBoer added it to the, you know, like, we were kind of talking, I met with her today to go over this, because I actually texted her in the middle going, hey, where do we get our questions from? Because my, my mind was just kind of going, ooh, I like this. Because it really kind of dug into these five standards of, you know, provide responsible school district governance, set and communicate high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting those expectations, create conditions, district-wide for students and staff success, hold school district accountable for meeting student learning and expectation, learning expectations, and engage local community and represent the values and expectations they hold for their schools. Some of this we do, and we have outlined very well. And, you know, we just kind of talked about some of that in Superintendent DeBoer's, you know, evaluation presentation there. But when I looked at our 36-question survey and kind of held it up to their 72-question survey, I kind of broke it down to see, like, where we fell. And, you know, we, we do cover all, like, if we match them up, we cover all five. But the, the really neat thing was, they were able to take the scores, and it gets all like nerdy statistical here, which I got really excited about, because I'm studying that right now. So, I was able to like, I knew you, I knew you'd love it. But they were able to take the, the scores where the school committee didn't necessarily score unanimously in agreement, and they kind of looked at the differences, or to us nerds, the standard deviation of that, and said, okay, where it's closer to one, there was a bigger spread of scores. And so, using that and saying, okay, so like, in this example, does, to what extent does our school committee govern using policies that align with research-based best practices? The school committee scored at 3.17, but it had a standard deviation of .7528. So, that said, there was a big, there was a bit of a discrepancy between the five board members as to how they felt about that, which meant, the school committee at their retreat could then say, okay, maybe we need to make this a goal. And but by using that goal, they then can share that, it would align with the district goals, which align with the superintendent's goals, which kind of puts everything into this alignment, that then allows the superintendent to take, well, okay, we've made this our school committee goal. We want to make sure that we're governing using policies that align with research-based best practices. Like, we're going to take this and make a goal out of it. Superintendent DeBoer would then take that and then share that out with administration, teachers, and say, okay, this is what the school committee said, this aligns with this part of our school improvement plan. And the data that then came of it, and I can share the slideshow, I shared it with Superintendent DeBoer, but they were able to then take state test scores and show that as the school committee started moving toward improving their self-assessment rating, the test scores started rising, because that communication was happening, that, that governance was happening, those expectations were being set. We do a really good job, I feel, you know, we've got a good foundation of what we currently have in our self-evaluation, but this kind of showed me a way that we could really use it to take what we have as a really good, again, foundation, but really build upon it even, and make it even stronger. You know, like, and so many of these things can change on a dime, we all know that, like, people come and go. And it accounted for, you know, to Superintendent DeBoer's point, they did have times where they looked at where, you know, school board members were new, and that's where you would see, like, they color-coded the answers to the questions, and you can see, like, the black parts would be, like, where it was a new member or a new superintendent came on board. So, the school committee member might have rated something, and I don't know. So, they changed the ratings as well. It wasn't like how we currently rate it, but it wasn't always, most of the time, some of the time, never, I don't know. So, it really, it, it kind of takes ours and would elevate it, and that was something that I kind of wanted to share out, because I do feel there's some value in this possibly. And I kind of got really excited in Superintendent DeBoer's office today, sharing all of this, because I really, I don't know, I think it's an interesting way to look at how we, as a board, take what we do and affect what's happening in our schools, as opposed to just kind of taking a self-assessment and going, wow, we're doing a really great job. Like, this is some way to really tie it statistically to improving our district from, you know, we could be a really hyper, you know, we are a decent performing district, but it could take us to that next level in some respects. So, there's still a little bit of legwork I got to do, and I was, you know, figuring out what school districts, they presented, their districts in Washington State, they did a case study in Idaho, they had statistics on Native American students and how boards in those districts saw rising scores when the school committee better aligned on their self-assessment. So, it was really, that day alone, I felt like was fantastic. The other sessions I attended were about increasing student voice, both in the superintendent advisory committee, but also what we're trying to do with our student advisory committee for school committees. Those, that one was presented by a group of students from Maryland, which, you know, we're trying to organize a high school of a very small number compared to these kids who, one kid's like my county has 110,000 students who vote for me, and I visit 65 schools every year to talk to, and I was like, they're like, we have four-day school weeks so that we can do all this work and present back to our school board. So, those were really great. The AIAN lunch was also excellent. I kind of wish Talia had been here, because the speaker at that spoke to his journey through the education system and shared some really interesting things. He apparently has a residency at Harvard right now, so he's an artist. He was really, that was really good. And then just, you know, the usual networking with other school districts. But that Friday workshop, again, I'm happy to share PowerPoint slides with you from this. But it was really, I found valuable, and I personally would like to see us maybe tweak our self-evaluation a little bit, because what they had in theirs and how they broke down, like, ours, some of ours are a little bit broad, and they really break some of them up into more detailed questions. So, that's kind of, that was what I took away from it, and I would like to maybe see if we can implement to make ourselves stronger and better.
Well, that sounds, that sounds like a workshop I would have. Well, that sounds, that sounds like a workshop I would have gotten into too.
Yeah, probably, I almost texted you during it.
So I think you sort of made the case for doing the evaluation with your new committee as much as I, my feedback is not going to be all that valuable to you setting goals for next year. We've kind of always used this evaluation as, to inform what we do at the retreat. I do think that, as far as I know, before I was on the committee, there was no self-evaluation. So that was this, so what we selected here would just.
That was my question, was where, did they come from MASC?
It came from MASC, I think, and we picked which ones, they weren't, I don't know if we picked, was it all of them? Okay. Yeah, okay, I can't remember, it was a while ago. So, and we've not really adjusted them. So I think, I, I guess my only comment with respect to the standard deviation and those, that kind of more statistical analysis is, we have a relatively small board.
We're average.
Yeah, I mean, like, we don't, what I've noticed is that we don't have much variation across our rankings on these typically. But maybe that, I don't know if that's good or bad, but, you know, on a nine-member board like Falmouth, I'm sure you're going to see some.
They, their case studies, they did one district in Idaho that had three hundred students in a five-member board. And they found that even, and you can definitely look at this, but even in the scores where they were close to four, it wasn't that big of a difference, but it was enough that it made things pop out. So that was addressed in this as well, with that concern of, you know, our bigger board's going to, but it didn't seem to.
But I mean, it's basically taking the idea that where there is variability is probably where you might need to focus, so.
But if, yeah, but again, maybe if we had more questions that were a little bit more, I don't know. Again, it's just something to think about, but I appreciate that. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's really cool. Don?
No, I was going to say, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with the rest of the committee?
Do you want copies of my scribbled notes as well, my packet that I'm like?
Yeah, well, she just gave me copies today because the slide presentation that she can share, she shared with me today is like a hundred slides.
Like a hundred and fifty slides. But, but this wasn't in the slide deck, and it has, like, the worksheet that you would use once you do, like, you know, areas of strength, opportunities for growth, opportunities for increased cohesiveness, recurring themes, and.
I mean, I, I think you could probably, I wouldn't be surprised if you could get somebody that presented at that, at our retreat, or you can.
Yeah, well, they, I know they do it, they do go to school districts and present it. And one of the people at the table I was sitting at was, they were two members from a Washington State school board that had had this group of professionals come and do this assessment with their district. So that is kind of what they do, they go out in Washington State, and they're starting to get into other districts and other states as well. So maybe you do reach out to those presenters.
Some people just do that at one time a session?
No, it's an annual, annually, yeah, and that's why, you know, these handy-dandy graphs are like from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-one.
So this assessment is done by a third party?
No, it's the schools, they just provide the questions, and then it has the formula. So no, they just give it to you, you do it, and then you would take this set of questions, answer them, and score, and do your own analysis. Yeah. Yeah, really, that's why. And I think it was shared with that intention of if you didn't already do one, you know, it's just, and I did compare, like, I was sitting there on my lunch break, just kind of comparing them, like, they ours to this, and trying to line it up and, and see, and looking at our goals for our district. Because again, it has to all be, in order for this to be effective, it has to be in alignment across the board. So, and not just our, you know, not the school board, but district administration.
Thank you for raising that, we have to move on, but I appreciate that. And.
Thanks for allowing me to go, I always love that.
Yeah. Sorry I missed it this year. Okay, last thing, upcoming events, anything you want to call out specifically, Patty?
Just making sure that there's a meeting on May first, which is Monday night at seven. And then the following Saturday, which is May sixth, are the kind of elections, they're voting. We need everyone to block votes, and those are at different locations. We did put the different pieces up on the main sign, and we're putting it in Friday's communication just so our families know where they're supposed to vote, that's changed from their normal. And then on the list of events, you can see different things. I will say we did miss the last weekend, April, is Good Play. You're a good man, Shonda Bell, from NMHS. And so there's a Friday night performance and a Saturday night performance.
Saturday and Sunday, there's the, two PM, two PM and seven PM on, on, they're doing, on Saturday, they're doing two and seven, and on Sunday, it's a two.
Okay, so I'll make sure that, all the sides, I need to get to working hard, and it's going to be a good shift.
Yeah, they, it's really fun to know that one of our graduates is the director, Anna Jocelyn, and she's by all accounts very well, well-liked as a director. Yeah. Okay, great, thank you for that. So I don't believe I have anything else to add, I don't see any additional public comments. So for the second to last time, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.